Everybody, we are live for Facebook. So we'll start our, start our meeting now. Sorry. Okay, we are relaxed in these Facebook work sessions. So this is the work session in preparation for our recess meeting of Tuesday, March the 15th. And we have the pleasure of having a presentation. I have been asked, I put out a request for the board members to have, give me ideas of things they might want to hear about at these work sessions. And one of my, the topics that I got feedback on was, was the museum. And so we are very fortunate to have Corey Gallo, who has done a number of projects at the museum, and he's gonna, he's gonna give us kind of an update and the status and any projects that may be going on. So please do.
Thank you. What's mine? Five minutes?
I told him T.
Well, T is fine. Whatever you got.
I told Mayor when I walked in, I had handouts and notes and everything, and in my life, and I switched cars this morning. So I guess to entertain, just me.
Wing it, just wing it. You're good.
Yeah, I'm really good at winging. I'm a professor, I got this. So the museum's actually coming, it's getting close to 50 years, actually.
Really?
It's in the seventies is when it's created, so it's getting, it's been around for a long time. First thing to know about the museum, it's a volunteer organization. And it's been, the, actually, the building it's in used to be the train station, Train Depot for the city. It used to be down the street, was moved there when the museum was created. And it is a lot bigger on the inside than is a Dr. Who fan. And it's the first thing anybody that comes there says, wow, no idea you had all this much stuff in here. I'm really proud of the, I think we're almost getting close to the third generation of folks that have been involved. They've been very good stewards of, of the community across diversity and different groups that cover a wide spectrum of the history of the city and the county. We serve the entire county. And if you haven't been, I encourage you to come by. It's open during the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, four. We lean on volunteers to be open during those times. We did complaints, why aren't we open more? Why aren't we open on game days? But we've, and so our mission, be open for the community, be a steward, be the attic for the community, for lack of a better way. And I think we've done a very good job of that. There's a lot of families that have entrusted their treasures to us to, to hold, to keep, to display, to share the story of their families and their, and the community. And if you come in, you'll see the care that's gone into that. We have also, so that one part, the second, and the thing we've tried to do the last few years is to create more programming that's more actively engaging the community. We actually had a lot of steam up before COVID. We had plans for a monthly session for both retirees and then families with small children, focused on the genealogy program in partnership with the university that went for several months. And so, and we've, we've done for the last few years, a Cub Scout program that's tied to their merit houses, which were available for tours, for school groups. And so we'll get requests from that through the year. The other thing, the third thing that we try to do, so collecting the history, programming, then also special exhibits that we've kind of tried going, we've done four now. The latest one is on Dan Camp in the Cotton District. And we're kind of waiting to get an event around that before we move on to the next one. Plan was to do two of those a year. So the board is made up of four members from the city, four members from the county. Currently, the chair of that is a group, I will say, I am not the typical demographic in age. And if you've been involved with the museum, I say that with love for everyone that I've worked with at the museum. I, for a long time, was the only one that wasn't retired, what I mean by that, on the group. But when I started into this role, the first thing I said, I don't have time to do what the previous presidents or the chairs of the group have done in the past. We have to make, we had to make some adjustments. In moving to the future, what we would like to do is, we would like to expand and move towards having a part-time staff person. We realize with volunteers, it just, it's never going to be consistent until we get there. We want to be thought of in a similar vein as like the library is the resource.
Have you thought about partnering with someone for executive director, kind of Starkville Arts Council, or somebody who might be wanting to share that kind of?
We have, we have not. We had thought, we talked, we had a lot of discussions about this in looking at if we stay as a part-time, 20 hours a week or less, be a little more affordable for us. I think that would be a big first step. And maybe that partnering is, is an opportunity, and we could certainly reach out, then because we're sharing that resource with expense. From a funding standpoint, we have not asked for an increase since 2010 in the city or county. And so it's held at $5,000 since then. I'll be honest and say, in large part, because we haven't used, needed the funds beyond that. That money does not cover our budget. We're subsidized by the Friends of the Museum, the nonprofit group that helps to raise funds. Our typical budget is around $16,000, $18,000 a year is what our expenses are. So we get a total of 10 between the city and the county. So if we were to add on $20,000 position, we'd see how that goes. We talked to the friends, they're supportive of us, of trying to raise more to support that. But I think it's coming up, we're gonna try to ask to see if we can move so we can share within that, to move that. So, you know, if you look at the, if you look at what we've done in the last two or three years to try to make it more than a collection, and it's a really valuable thing to be that resource for the community. There's so many families that come there and say, just come to visit and say, my grandfather's or my uncle's element that's in the museum. And if we're, if we move to want to, ever want to be more than that, it's going to require more consistency. And so we've had a lot of discussions, and like I said, I think that's where we'd like to move. The friends are on board with increasing and trying to be more active in fundraising and help support. But it's going to take a little bit of everything to kind of move in that direction. So we, like I said, I think it's really exciting to see all the stuff that's happened. We have a student that's helping right now to redo all the signage in the museum, all the labels. And we, we lean on student groups a lot for service in maintaining the building, the grounds, and the exhibits. Their student group retypes every little sign that someone carefully did in that typewriter. And we have them all in a, in a, in a data set now, so that they can be reprinted and recreated graphically, and I'm just going through and doing that currently. We also have another student that helps out, so this is sort of a partnership of the university. It's partnered by a scholarship through, through a family. And then the, that works with the grounds, that leverages the master gardeners and student groups for maintaining the grounds, which is really like a small neighborhood park within that area, because of the pavilion and other things that are there. I'll brag on my part of the museum, my students read, over time, develop the site. The pavilion there was, used to be the gas station hall in Front Street of Bowlings. That was repurposed and created, and about five years ago, was invited to be part of this permanent selection of the Smithsonian, that project. So really cool example of design in the community. And so I said, I think we wanted to be, I think the best days of the museum are in front of us, where we want it to be. We want it to be beyond just that collection of stuff, having an active space for people to use and engage with more frequently. But to get there, especially in my schedule, we need, I think to, I think that's the next step that we see for the museum.
Have you, are you saying your students, is that an intern program, or is that just strictly volunteers that?
Yeah, we've typically have one, so there's a Wilkinson family scholarship that actually was set up for the, specifically for that through the university. It funds $2,000. The friends have offset that, another $3,000 or $4,000. This past year, we actually hired a second to really focus on the interior as a, as an intern, essentially, right? And so those are helpful. I'm an educator, students are not consistent. But we get a lot out of that, especially, and I, when we work with them, the first thing we say is, your job is to get other people here, right? To get other people to do service, to help out. So then we really use them, the folks on leveraging the day one group in the fall, service days to the spring, and using that sort of. And so we have structured our board into several subcommittees that, so all of us are meeting twice a week. Grounds and facilities, programming, exhibits, and then outreach and contracts, which I don't think has been in a long time. But it's part of that, is just who's on the board who's helpful. It's again, at the end of the day, a complete volunteer group, and so, but through that structure, that's how we're able to sort of engage and get these different things done. I think we get a lot done on who we have. But it concerns me, someone like Joan Wilson, who's been involved with the museum for a very long time. Joan's like, I'm not doing this much longer. Joan has organized all of her volunteer hours for years, and so, which is an incredible amount of work, to schedule someone to be there every three days a week, and wrangle people and, you know, beg them to show up when we have, when we have someone to sit there. And what the reality of the museum being open like that, it needs to be open for people to come in. When we do programming, we have a programming event, we'll have more people come to that program where they may walk in off the street over the month. And that's how important having those active, engaged, engaged members are. A lot of people say, we need to open on game days, if we, you know, for people in town, and I think that would be something also, for people to come in and visit. But anyway, like, like I said, we're going to be beyond that sort of opening schedule. I think that's what we think the next step is.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
What are your operation hours?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, four.
So it would be nice if you could open on the weekends when people are out of school or whatever, is, you know, one day a month, maybe even. But the internship piece of that might allow some of that if there's an opportunity. And we do get quite requests for intern, or, you know, things for interns from time to time, so maybe we'll, you know, consider looping that in as an opportunity. So, okay.
Well, looking forward to thoughts and ideas. Like I said, we, as a next step for us, we'd like to explore how that could happen. And if there's additional ideas or interest on what that could look like, let us know.
Okay, thank you.
We're working our hard, we're working our best at it to try to make it as good as possible for the community.
Anything else, Alderman? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just going.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I'd encourage everybody to go, if you haven't, if you haven't been, it's really, it's been a while since I've been there too, but it's really interesting look back at, at where Starkville has been, some of the things that have happened in Starkville. And if we don't know where we are from, it's sometimes hard to figure out where we're going to go. So I think it's important that we know, know our history, and y'all, y'all are very efficient with your resources.
Any other questions?
And the Cool Papa Belle uniform is still out. Okay.
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for letting me have a conversation.
No, absolutely, absolutely. You wouldn't want to sit through this one. This was a, this was a long agenda, so let's see if we can get through this, folks, and hopefully with any luck, we'll be able to put a, a good amount on consent. We can hope anyway. So we have minutes, Mr. Latimer, those minutes are in good shape? So any issues with putting those on consent? And those are just work session minutes, so they should be very brief. We've got some new employees to introduce. Do we know how many, Mr. Ashford, that we're going to be introducing?
Seven.
Seven new employees? Awesome. Okay, great. We do have one public appearance, Mr. and Ms. Dodd are going to come for, they have 10 minutes. We will make sure that they're aware of that, that time restriction associated with that, and I, we'll, we will move, move forward with that one. Under public hearing, we've got the third public hearing, and hopefully this will be the last one for the UDC. We didn't have any changes specifically to this, but this allowed us to, to cycle it through one more time, and so this is an opportunity for public hearing and the consideration for those amendments. Another public hearing is located, the building located at 200 Curse Circle. This will be the full presentation of the concerns that we create the Minister of Public Health, Safety, and Welfare of the community. So this will be the chief, and Steen will make that, Steen's up back over there in the corner somewhere, will make that presentation to us under that public hearing heading. So nothing from a consent standpoint for us to do on that, but all of that information should be in your packet. And I believe Mr. Latimer has looked at it and given it the healthy check mark.
The record is right for the board's consideration Tuesday.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
She might want to tweak that address, it just says Curtis, instead of Curtis.
Curtis Circle, okay. Lisa, would you make that? Thank you so much. I see it as circle no matter what happens. Okay, thank you. Probably check the underlying documents too, Lisa, and make sure that they reflect that same. Okay. All right, and under the mayor's, mayor's business, we have adoption of a cemetery and burial policy for the city of Starkville. I drafted this, I passed it through Mr. Latimer, I passed it through Mr. McCaskey, who has been the one since Ms. Corbin Kemp left us, who has been dealing with the cemetery and the issues associated with the requests for deed transfers and that sort of thing. So this is a response to that, as to how we can manage that. It also provides the state statute that is associated with that. Mr. Latimer took a look at that, make sure I hadn't made any missteps, and made some recommendations. So hopefully that will be something that y'all would be comfortable with. But we do need to, we do need to do something affirmative about it, because we are continuing to get requests, and there are issues associated with it, so we need to have a policy of some kind of.
Mayor, we operate cemetery directly, the city does. We don't, I mean, out of code, we're part of the city.
Well, Mr. McCaskey, Community Development, has been the one who's been the, the person to contact, and he's been working with, with the, I don't know the official name, Friends of the Cemetery, for want of a better expression.
They're Bible ones, see through. I guess they are not.
I think they are, yes. And so anytime we get a request, whether it's from Oddfellows on MLK, or Oddfellows on University, we respond to those. And then, of course, we manage the landscape maintenance, which I haven't heard from you recently, so I'm assuming it's still doing okay. Landscape maintenance on, for all three, Brush Arbor and both Oddfellows. So, yes, that's, we are, we are responsible for it. State statute, and we accepted that role for, for both cemeteries.
They, they solicit contribution, I guess they do other things in the cemetery.
Yeah, they have, they have, I think, a, a group that is sort of a membership group, and they make sure, because the city doesn't take care of the headstones. Those are not ours, those belong to the, to the people who made the purchase of the deed, et cetera. So they, I think, have a collective group that takes care of headstones and those sorts of things. And this is reflective of that.
Are there still plots available?
No, there are not.
Neither Oddfellows?
Well, no, and we're, we're saying that there are not, because unless you have a deed at this point in time, we don't know what's there. So this policy addresses anyone who wishes to, say, purchase, purchase one, swap one, think that there may be a, an unused plot. We have some requirements that if you're going to do that, you're going to have to go in and make, and do the research to determine that there's not already an internment there, and you're going to have to bring that back to us, and then we will, we will work with you to allow you to be able to use that, assuming it comes up with, you know, no, no other use. So, and there's some criteria associated with that, and that's, that's in that policy. So, but if anyone thinks of anything that didn't get mentioned in there, you know, just let me know, and we'll see what we can do, and bring it back again, incorporate it. But I think we've got a pretty robust document, so we'll give y'all a chance to read that one. The other one is consideration of the extension of the declaration of an emergency, so that's our kind of standard thing, we do consent on that one. And then amending the COVID policy to remove the indoor masking requirement, and I think we've reached a point, guys, now, where it's appropriate to do that. So I am seeking that as a, as a course of, of action for us on this, and that just takes that particular bullet point out. Mr. Latimer's looked at that, Mr. Ashford has looked at that, so I'm, I'm hopeful that we can make that a pretty simple.
Consent?
Consent? Is it okay with consent?
Is it, is it in the declaration, the emergency declaration right now? Is it part of it, or is it a separate thing?
Emergency, well, the Eighth Resolution references the policy, and the policy stands on the Eighth Resolution, so that remains intact, but it's just changing one bullet point in the policy.
So you want to, what you're saying is that we want to amend?
The policy.
The policy, and then do the extended declaration, and that's extended declaration?
Those are, those are.
Two separate things. Extension of declaration be done for consent agenda?
Yes, and well, and I was, if we can do the COVID policy or remove the indoor masking.
I appreciate that.
No, I'm good. You good with that? Okay, let's just put it on consent then. Okay? All right. Calling for the first public hearing, we have a request from Mississippi State University, as they have now opened College View to extend the Leisure and Recreation District down Adkerson and into the College View from Adkerson toward the university. And this is simply calling for the first public hearing on that, so it would be amending an ordinance, but this, this should be fairly easy from a consent standpoint, just because all we're doing is calling for a public hearing on this one. That'll cut consent? Okay. The next one is consideration of partnering with the county to extend the overlay project. Okay, so we have Garrett Road, we are doing, in this year's capital project, we are doing Garrett Road from Reed Road back toward 389. And we had also in there doing Garrett Road from 25 to city limits, and that was just doing, and Mr. Kemp, tell me if I go wrong, doing some, there were some base failures and doing some overlay sections. Is that accurate? It was in the, in the budget to the tune of about $50,000. So Supervisor Howard called Vice Mayor Perkins, this is his ward, and asked him if the city would be interested in partnering with the county, not unlike we do with tap grants, partnering with the county to make that entire section of road from, from 25 to the city limits, totally redo it, which would be ideal, because it is not in the greatest shape, but we were trying to do something that would just let us limp along for a bit. But with the partnership to do that, and so what, what we ended up, we sat down together, and what the county said they would do is they would do the reclamation of that road, which would be milling it all up, and putting down fresh soil cement, and what else? Repairing all the subsurface?
Repairing really soft areas.
Okay.
For the surface, but incorporating soil cement to the existing base.
Okay, so making it a good stable base, and then the city would come in and do the overlay. And so the numbers came out, so that the county's amount was basically 170,000, that should also be in your, in your packet. And our part would be about 150, right? So that takes us beyond the 50 that we had originally intended, and jacked it up to 100,000. And I've contacted Alderman Sistrunk to see if we can cobble together some additional funds to do that. Now, the reason I would like to do that, guys, is because I think it's important for us to partner with the county. I think it is, it sets a precedent for us. We've done it in the past with the tap grants, but it's on a kind of a different level. This will be an actual 50/50, pretty close to 50/50 split. And I see other opportunities for us to do that. Supervisor Trainer has mentioned Old Mayhew Road, when the annexation is complete, as an example. He has mentioned that perhaps the North Montgomery up beyond Garrett Road, where it becomes Rock Hill Road, as an example. He has recently inquired about a very small, small project, which is Collier Road, and I told him we would look at that. But I think this is a real opportunity for us to partner in ways with the county that is, and Hospital Road, thank you, yes, and Hospital Road as well, because obviously it serves the county hospital. And so that would, you know, that would meet some other desires, strong desires of some of this board.
Looked this way.
Yeah, I did look this way. I mean, it's a strong desire that you have, I acknowledge it. I think we all think it's important, but you're particularly passionate about it.
Well, and may I inject at this point that I, it's not because it's in my ward.
Oh, no, I'm.
No, I was saying, I really want to stress this, that I, these main streets like this, you know, man, these major thoroughfares and stuff, and it could be anybody's ward, but if it's a main street, I'm on it. I'm gonna be, I'm looking at it, and I think it's, when the county, when we start looking at the industries, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We're in the economic belt, county right in their woods. And so it's in, it's in best, it's, oh, the best, that's not right. It's in the interest of both the city and the county to make sure that these major thoroughfares, particularly the ones in front of this, that the county on Hospital is in good shape. Because industrial prospects, people looking to put a business in, they're going to look at the hospital.
Yes.
And it's just one of the things where, if that thing's gotten in bad shape, and I, I just, now, let me ask you this, could, could it be, I mean, I know that.
You're about to, you're about to mess my deal up here. And here's why. Let me, let me, let me finish my little spiel, okay?
Can I say?
Well, you can, let me, let me finish mine. So the reason it's on here now without any more preliminary than it is, which is going to respond to your, is that they want to go forward Monday or Tuesday with putting out to bid. And so with them wanting to fast-track it like that, then I think it's appropriate for us to go ahead and take some action on it, and we can have this further discussion about other opportunities a little bit later in the, in the arrangement. So I would like us to proceed for all those reasons. So does, okay, now, Alderman Beatty, I will give you back the floor.
I'm on, I'm on 50% on that. I don't have any move on that. And at the same time, let me ask you this, with a partnership with them on sale, and I know that from what I'm hearing, these are roads that, what Supervisor want to go at this point, they're thinking of roads that come up to our corporate limits, I mean, with exceptional hospital road, all these roads that come up.
Yes.
County roads come up.
That are well used by their.
This is an interior road, but it has a reason for them to be, you know, concerned about the condition of this Bronck County hospital.
Yes.
With the timeline for getting an overlay, a hospital road, be moved forward, because we partner with the county, or, I mean, is there something we can do within our five-year plan that might, I know that we split, we split the cost of the county, that's less cost for us at the same time, if the, the partner of it delays it a year or two? I don't, I still say this, I don't think we need to go two, three more years with that hospital, that road in that kind of shape it's in.
Okay, so I, I would suggest that the partnership with the county would bring it forward to a sooner role than pushing it back.
Would, would, in the mix of the other roads that you've mentioned, could it, would it be something we could elevate to, to, I think, in an importance thing?
Yes, and that's, I'm sorry, I didn't say it well. Yes, I would think we would elevate it beyond, and I don't know, do we have it on any given year ever? Is it like 25?
Twenty-four, I believe.
Twenty-four?
I mean, if it can move to a 23 project, if we go this route, that would be a.
I think, I think that's absolutely something that we should discuss and work toward. So I have no, I have no problem with that, I just don't, I don't want to try to throw in something that's going to, that's going to mess this up, so.
Mayor, can we meet with them and them meet with us? I guess not to the point where our joint meet or something like that, you know?
At some point, I think that'd be, I think that'd be a great idea. Because I think that's a nice thing to do anyway, periodically, and it's been four years since we did it, so, you know. No, I mean, as an entire group?
With the Garin project?
Well, we did sit down, didn't we? Okay, you're right, I'm sorry, we did, because I was going back to the bonds, so.
I have one question, this is for Mr. Kemp. Is there any, is there any significant base failure on hospital road that would, where we would have to rebuild road base before we overlay that street?
I can't think of any. I haven't, I haven't written through there in the last few weeks.
It's just, that's just surface coming apart.
I think so, I think it's just the old age of that surface and the drainage that contributes.
So if it worked out with the county, say, split 50/50 on there, or some kind of split, we're talking about an overlay base, what we're talking about.
Milling overlay.
Jack Street, how was it? Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
That's a great idea, I think, with the relationship with, like you said, we might be able to come up with a lot more than that.
Okay, good.
Something we should have done a long time ago.
Yeah, well, it's nice that we can reach that point, I think that's great. And part of that, I think we, we built on that based on the tap grants that we partnered, partnered on with, so that's great. All right, well, thank you very much for that. Anybody want to put that on consent?
Consent.
Oh, awesome, thank you. All right. And then we have, and Alderman Rupp, I'm going to let you present this one, basically. So this is a request from Main Street Board, which Alderman Rupp represents the, the city on, for issues associated with parking, which we know, we, we regularly have discussions and, and hear from people about parking, two-hour parking, et cetera, et cetera. So Main Street took it up, and I will let you take. So Main Street took it up, and I will let you take it from there.
Thank you. Since being appointed to the board, I go to the meetings at Main Street and I hear a lot of folks talking about parking. Not, but they all have a different idea of what the solution is, which is human nature. So I asked them to survey their members and then bring me a consensus of what they want us to do based on the survey. And they did that. They did everything I asked. And I said, whatever you bring me, I will bring before the board because I think the merchants downtown are on the front lines of parking. What they want is four-hour parking on Washington and Lafayette. But they have since asked me to amend that to make it like a three- or six-month trial period, just to give it a shot to see if it works. I don't care what that number is in particular. I don't know if you all have an idea of if it should be three, four, five, or six. But they want to see if it has an impact. And the goal is if folks can park for four hours, like if you're going to the hairdresser on the side streets, then maybe it'll pull some employees or some other folks off Main Street. This is something that they, as an organization, would like to try, and I will support it. I told them I would support it. So I will be making a motion to that effect to reflect the item there, and I will throw in a month trial period. So if you have any thoughts on that, let me know what you think that might be.
Well, and we can probably do that right here and now. Do we have any particular thoughts about the timeline? Three months, six months? Three months would take us at least to the end of the semester, that much I know. Alderman Sistrunk?
One thing that, and I've talked to Alderman Rupp about this, is I'm not sure that there is as much a consensus about this as the, has been represented in the information that we were emailed. There are businesses that will clearly benefit from this. There are businesses that will probably be harmed in some ways by this. And I think we may just be a little premature. I think there may be some opportunity to go back and tweak this a little bit more with some things that are happening external to this. With, you've identified a potential source of some additional parking. There's been some additional parking added on Megs. I think the partnership is in the process, or Main Street is in the process of adding some signage that will help point people toward free parking, that sort of thing. And so I would, I personally would appreciate if we stopped, took a breath, and made sure that there was, in fact, a consensus of the downtown merchants. What I hear is that there are, and what I see is that we're going to be encouraging people to park on those side streets who are now parking in other places. And a lot of those are probably going to be employees at businesses downtown, including restaurant employees who may work a four-hour shift in the afternoon or morning, which doesn't really help that hairdresser who needs, if those parking places are all filled with employees, it doesn't really help that hairdresser who needs a parking spot that's available for somebody who's there as a paying customer. So I think it may, there may still be some wrinkles to work out. The trial period, I appreciate the idea of a trial period. I think that we're about to roll into what is probably our second busiest season in terms of the way that business ebbs and flows here in the city, in that we'll be in the middle of baseball season, graduation, all that sort of thing. And so I think the parking stresses are going to be pretty high anyway. I'm not sure it's the right time, is all I'm saying, is I'm not sure it's the right time.
So if you want to do this, I mean, I'm assuming you want to continue with it based on your promise to the Main Street Board. Do you want to just append a three-month or a six-month and let's just move it forward in that way? Or anybody, Alderman Brooks, any thoughts on that?
Well, when I first got the letter, I thought that was the way to go. I guess, you know, as word gets out, I must be like Alderman Sistrunk. I've heard from a lot of other people that were like, you know, I didn't really have a voice, and I thought, you know, they probably did. But it was a lot more concern, maybe from the restaurant side, about the four-hour parking than, and I mean, I really thought everybody was involved. I mean, everybody was on board with it. But I think there is a lot of concern out there, especially the restaurant guys, that this will be more employee parking than anything else, you know.
So they did call, go back and call all the restaurants?
Have done that.
And what they told me was that there was more ambivalence than anything, which may be why they didn't participate in the survey to begin with. And whether the board votes it up or down is, you know, obviously up to the board. I feel based on principle, as a representative from the city, I said, I will address this problem. If you come together and you do X, Y, and Z, and it impacts you all the most, I will carry that motion forward. What the board does with it is up to the board, but I feel compelled to carry, follow through with my.
Right, I understand. But you were asking for some board input on three months versus six months, which is where I'm trying to see if we can get you.
I didn't get any of that.
Three months and maybe not right now, is my input.
Okay, all right. Alderman Beatty?
Mayor and Alderman Rupp. From the letter, there was a letter from Rosa Delonge, who she's president of downtown, I remember her association there.
Correct.
It basically alluded to that this was going to be used by employees, that perhaps we're inconvenienced right now by places to park. I do not think that we should extend parking to four hours on side streets to accommodate employees. It just, I don't know whether they'd be parking behind Starble Cafe or over behind Corrine or wherever like that.
Well, no, they're parking on Main Street and the side streets and just playing that little parking roulette where they run out, move their car two spaces.
Which is, I don't get that if I own a business and I have employees and I'm trying to encourage open spaces for my customers to come and my employees to park. I don't get that. But I won't get too far down that road. But to now accommodate people to come in, park at 8:00, 12:00, go to lunch, and come back and park from 1:00 to 5:00. Employees, I mean, that's what's going to happen. A man that's got the Dunkin' store and TL Lot and all those people, going to have folks park in front of their business, all that and all that work around there on Main Street. I just don't, I think if you do this, you go open the box, you go open that thing up, and then it's, you know, that's, and I can't believe, you know, I understand the ambivalence of the restaurants on that, because at some point in time, when they get busy enough, people will spill around the side streets. And I just, and they're going to need those parking places on side Lafayette. You know, when it's busy, that's, if I eat lunch in Friday, you come in at 11 o'clock, 11:30 on Friday, I think the parking place is on Main Street. I turn it off. I just turn it automatically on Lafayette Street, go down about three quarters of the way and park. And so I can eat lunch or something. Well, that's, if employees go over there now, it's going to be, it's going to affect businesses on those streets, and it's going to, I turn over parking spaces, and right now we turning them over.
Well, the Main Street would disagree. They feel that the parking issue is not working as it is, and this is what they feel as merchants, that they want to try. I feel, and we all feel differently, that they know more about it than we do, and I'm willing to give them that try. So that's what the motion's about. If you feel differently than them, that's.
Is that the representation of the consensus of that downtown association, including those side street merchants?
It is all of their membership. Now, not all of them participated, but they had the opportunity.
It's the survey, right, yeah.
But they had that opportunity. And I'm not micromanaging the survey. I want them, as an organization, to say, these are the pain points we're having. We've talked to our membership. This is where we want to be. This is what we want to try. And I think that's very, that's what they should do.
So is the pain point right now that an employee has to walk out of their business every two hours?
Well, the pain point, as I told the mayor, we don't have a parking problem, we have a walking problem.
There you go. That's the bottom line.
We don't have a parking problem, it's a walking problem. Folks don't want to go. If I went to Nashville to a club and got to park within two blocks of the front door of that place, I would be, I'd buy a round for the house, right? Folks don't want to walk a block here.
Tuscaloosa, Tuscaloosa's got two-hour parking on the main drag, and they got two-hour parking in all of the premises.
Well, we can find lots of communities that do it different ways. This is what our merchants want to try. Again, the board can decide whether they want to support it or not.
Okay.
I'll make it three months because I'm sensing the pushback, so I'll make it as short a time to try as possible. I don't know that makes a difference with anyone, but.
Well, clearly it won't go on consent, but we will, we can add the three months to it as a, as a talking point.
Please.
Alderman Vaughn, anything?
Take the six months off and add the three months. People just got to walk. A lot of need to walk.
Yes, we do need to walk. We need to walk. Absolutely, we don't have a parking problem, we have to walk.
I can't believe that merchants that own businesses would pick somebody else's street to allow their employees to have a whole day to park on. I mean, I don't get that. I mean, that's to be fair to everybody. And the man's got the gift shop down there on side Lafayette. People going to park on his business all day long.
Well, you do realize that every one of these discussions centers around, in fact, we've got free parking, untimed free parking behind Starble Cafe, which was less than a block, and behind Sullivan's, which is less than a block. So none of this makes particular sense in terms of getting out of your vehicle. And I realize if it's raining, everybody wants to be in the front door. But it's just, we got a walking problem, not a parking problem.
I can understand if it rains.
Sure.
And we get all this free parking. I mean, it's just.
Well, and if you're going to be there all day anyway.
And most of these people that work, the most of these people, the employees, they need restaurants, they're younger people, they need to be walking.
Alderman Beatty, I do want to stress again that this is important to me, that it's the process of saying, you as an organization do this, and here's, the city will respond. Now, how the city responds will be up to the individual, Alderman, but the process was important for them to have that voice. And they did what we asked, what I asked them to do. So that's why I'm going to carry forward the motion.
It's understood.
And you've done what you told them you were going to bring to the board?
Absolutely, and that is all perfectly appropriate, and now the board can make that determination, so, okay.
Take the six months off, put the three months on. Do not put it on consent.
No, sir, it is not consent. Thank you. All right, so airport, we have a consideration approval of a multimodal grant. There's an opportunity there, and once it gets to us, then we'll be able to make that determination. So just approval of an application. Does that consent on that? All right, we have final plat, Mr. Havlin, you're here. So is there anything, we have a final plat for a minor subdivision. Anything of these items on here that you need to highlight for us?
First final plat is just to correct it incorrectly. The second one went to the plaintiff's zoning that was approved unanimously.
Okay.
The request for travel is to meet a requirement for its law preservation.
Yes, and we've done that in the past year.
There's two applicants for architecture review and the law preservation of the sole.
Sole applicants. Well, in particular, the final plat, there was, it was just a reconfiguring a lot. Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, they have like a driveway that approaches on the neighboring lot, so they're moving the wildland and taking care of that.
Okay, all right. Any issues with those going on consent? Okay, let's just do it. Try to knock those out. All right, under engineering, we have a right-of-way easement for the maintenance of Adkerson Way. And Mr. Latimer, you have looked at that agreement?
I have.
And that, and Mr. Kemp is comfortable with all of that? So consent for that? I'm sorry.
Hold on just a second. Let me ask you this.
Yeah.
Who's maintaining that right now? Except right-of-way?
We're stepping on one another, but I'm being facetious. It's brand new, so we really haven't had any maintenance to do.
The city has this section all the way through the Vista.
Yeah.
That was dedicated to the city, so kind of, I don't know if you've been through there, but the new section from kind of halfway up the hill down to College View is brand new. It's only been open probably for a couple of months.
That's where the new sidewalks go through?
Yes, sir.
So no, I'll guess Mississippi State's been maintaining that?
Really, the contractor has, I mean, he's just finished the final punch list, so he's kind of been, quote, maintaining, if you want to put it on somebody.
And just to give you an update, we don't, right now the streetlights are temporary streetlights because we're still waiting on delivery of the permanent streetlights, so, and that's probably, I think they were supposed to drop on the 14th, is what I recollect from my last communication with Jason Horner, but I haven't got a confirmation that we've actually gotten them yet.
Where's corporate limit line of that street?
It follows a section line, which is about.
There's no corporate city limit line on Adkerson Way.
It's all in the city.
Oh, and you got city.
Yeah, it's all in the city.
Huh? Well, I'm talking about where on the campus is our corporate limits?
It's probably about 500 feet east, 500, 700 feet east. On the other side of the overpass of 12, it follows a section line.
So, and we've already agreed with the university, they're taking care of College View up to that, up to Adkerson Way roughly. And then we're going to, they're giving, or handing Adkerson Way up to us to do, from College View up. Okay, all right. Consent for that one? We have the February financials. Any issues with that, Alderman Sistrunk? No, consent for that one? Okay. And then this is a renewal of our HVAC mechanical maintenance agreement with Brisland. And did we ever get the numbers for the police department?
We did.
Okay.
The police chief.
Okay, all right. So consent for that one? Fire department.
Chief? Yes, ma'am.
Yep, there you are. Sorry, you're backlit there. Permission for a commercial burn permit? Anything about this burn permit we need to know? This is on that 16th section land, right?
Yes, ma'am. I spoke with Rodney. Only issue is he's basically waiting to make sure that it's not.
Doesn't interfere with the path, flat path?
Everything is good.
Chief, that's vegetation, there's no old buildings or anything. Just come down and find out if it's dusting or whatever.
Vegetation.
Okay.
Okay, consent for that one? We have authorization for travel, for training, and this is the, kind of the train, the trainer, right, chief?
Yes, ma'am.
So he'll come back and train our people, so consent for that one? And then also, pretty much the same thing for the travel, travel to the crossroads. And when I first heard this, I, I thought, hmm, I used to go to the crossroads when I was a kid. So, wrong, different crossroad child, so consent for that one? All right, show one. And, I know, I know. And then the youth firefighter explorer program, which I'm pretty excited about. Chief, could you give us just a really quick one on that one?
Yes, ma'am. In this, we had fourteen to eighteen. I have had probably fifteen phone calls about lowering down to twelve years old. A lot of kids, that I'm strong, they just gonna have a lot going on, a lot to do. A lot of them play football and basketball and sports, so they wanted to have something else to do. So, this is a good opening, good opportunity for us to start catching them now, and hopefully to curb some of the crime, so hopefully work with Chief Valens on to...
That'd be great, and turn them into firefighters or policemen.
That's the whole, that's the whole opportunity.
Absolutely.
Firefighters.
Okay, great.
I agree with that, dear.
All right, consent for that one?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Ashford is creating a, a whole list here, he's got a page all to himself. And each one of these, Mr. Ashford, all of these are, are hires, is that correct? Except for the bottom one, which is an agreement to, with, you know, contract for Mr. Kemp, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, and one is a request for advertising.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, advertising for one. Any issues with any of these folks? These are all vetted through the department heads, right?
These are all replacement positions and not new positions.
Okay, so consent those? All righty. And the contract, Mr. Latimer, you've looked at that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and Mr. Kemp, you're the senior, you're comfortable with that? Okay, all right. And Mr. Ashford, you're recommending it? Okay, consent for that one? Okay. All right, police department, we have outside agencies regarding the shooting range, this is a good opportunity. Mr. Latimer, you've also looked at that one?
I have.
And chief, you anticipate, what agencies do you anticipate having these arrangements with?
Oh, yes, ma'am. All government, whether we're talking about, we have a close relationship with October County Sheriff's Department, Mississippi State Police Department, occasionally Mississippi Highway Patrol, and then every now and then the ROTC campus, Mississippi State's ROTC program. Those are the general entities that train them.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any issues with that for anybody? Consent for that?
Consent.
Okay. Our hotspot grant for personnel reimbursement due to supply chain issues. What have we got, swapping that out, changing it? All right, consent for that one? And then the reimbursable grant for Homeland Security for license plate reader technology.
Yay.
Yes. All right, utilities department, Mr. Kemp Senior, do we have anything in particular that we need to be highlighting on this one? Because usually all your stuff is purchasing stuff that none of us understand in the first place.
Well, thank you. I, I guess the first part, just to make sure people know, that's preparing us for the future on getting ready to do the revenue bonds. And we've got a lot of capital projects, as the board's aware, and you're aware, that kinda gives us a place.
Okay, so that seven million dollars will cover and give you some buffer, just in case?
We could have a little buffer built into that so that we think we're in good shape to be able to do what we need to do over the next few years to maintain, keep going forward. We've got a well to put in, we've got some major infrastructure in this place.
And we're still hoping for matching funds from the state?
That's correct. And so that could be up and down, depending on how the board wants to move with that. But not knowing that's for sure, this gives us the flexibility not to get boxed in on critical projects that we need to do in the next few years.
Okay, thank you.
This is only water and sewer, and we talked about area on that side. The electric isn't bringing us shit, right?
So, if the legislature gets bogged down, we're gonna get this match. This six and a half million match, and we're doing what we have now, which is six point five, this is seven. We, we move forward projects, so that's the money, or at least most of that would, would help us to go ahead and move forward until such time that they do meet in special session, or whenever they meet, to decide if we're gonna get our match money, right?
That's correct, and that would be for more money down the road. I mean, the projects are there, but we do look at some of the major wells, for instance, some of those bigger issues, or start a track for next year, and this gets the board in position so that we'll, we'll have options when we get there.
Okay, all right.
And then the rest of it is, like you said, is basically we've got contracts. Chris has been working real hard on this, the fast charging, the TVA, and...
Yes, and I'm gonna say something about that. I was in a, a meeting with a company who's interested in coming to Starville and being up in the North Star Industrial Park, and one of the things that they thought was important were electric vehicles. And so I was able to say in that meeting that we were focusing on some fast chargers that were coming, and we also had, already had a couple of chargers that had been installed and been in for a couple of years now, right, dear?
We have.
Yeah, so that was a, that was a positive, well-received issue. So, consent for the first one, consent for the second one? Service contract with Howard Technologies, that's the audio visual for the operations center. Mr. Clemmons has been working with those folks on that, is that correct?
That's right, Mayor, and I think we're finally comfortable with where those agreements are. And, and Chris had a final look at that, and it's a service agreement and a payment agreement. And so he's, he's vetted those, and I think we're ready to proceed now.
Okay, all right, good.
That, that equipment was our purchase, so this is just a...
The agreement, okay, all right. So, consent for that one? We have the Liheat, not Liheat, this is the partner to the Liheat, this is the Liwap. I don't know how they come up with these things. But this is an opportunity to assist in the low-income household water assistance, if everyone's familiar with Liheat, which is the electric assistance. So, we are gonna move forward with that if everyone's comfortable with that. So, consent for that one? Good, okay. Consolidated pipe, a low quote for manhole risers for street projects, consent for that one? Approval of the Honeywell Service Management Agreement, you have looked at that one, Mr. Latimer?
Have looked at it.
Good for that?